My name is Kathy McAdams Diaz and I'm here to make a statement regarding the presidential preference election that occurred March 22, 2016. I'm a recent transplant here from California and it has been quite a culture shock for me moving here to Arizona. I'm a licensed social worker with two master's degrees and many years of experience. I respectfully submit to Governor Ducey, Secretary of State Reagan, and County Recorder Purcell and this board that it is clear many citizens in Arizona were disenfranchised on March 22, regardless of their party affiliation, thereby preventing them from exercising their constitutional right to vote. I was on the ground in East Valley, I was working for one of the campaigns, canvassing and checking on people and conditions at the polls. Several, and this is in East Valley where I live, several people verbalized to me as I walked door to door that they could not vote due to long lines. These were primarily elderly adults, disabled persons, or women with small children. I witnessed long lines of people wrapped around the polling sites, people with small children, elderly persons with walkers, and disabled people in wheelchairs, as well as other people, standing in the hot sun for hours so they could exercise their constitutional right to vote. I submit to you, Governor Ducey, that this was a total disgrace and absolutely the responsibility lies with you since you signed the legislation to reduce the polling places from 200 to 60 against the advice of county election officials.
Ms. McGowan, want to make one other point?
Okay, well, like I said, it was, okay, one other point.
Sure.
I would like to point out that our Latino brothers and sisters were disproportionately affected because entire communities lacked a single polling location. I had the opportunity to meet the former county recorder while I was at the polling location.
Okay.
And I asked him what he said, and he stated to me, plain and simple, this is voter suppression.
Okay, Catherine.
Thank you very much for being here. Thanks for joining us today. I am missing the speaker slip. I have number 12, but I don't have a number 11. Was there a number 11 that's floating around?
That's with me.
That was you? Okay, because you're listed as number 10 for me. So I'm glad I got you. We'll go with the number 12. Mr. Ed Higgins is here today. Thanks for joining us, Ed. This is, this is the final speaker slip that has been turned in, so you will be the final speaker today on this topic.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, members.
I went to go vote on Tuesday at the Tempe substation. I'm a Tempe resident. When I got there, there was an hour and a half wait, which is fine. This is my Super Bowl. I'm a geek and I love politics, so I went there to go enjoy the event. When I got into the, to be scanned, the person that was running the e-poll book didn't quite understand how to use it or was flustered because I kept on coming up as Republican. I had my voter ID card. I had my ID. The voter ID card said I was, I was good. She kept on checking it. It, it wouldn't go through. It kept on saying Republican. So they gave me a provisional ballot, which is okay. I can fill out one line and come back. When I came back to put the provisional ballot in the envelope, the person who was putting the pink slip on the envelope filled it out for me, but said she didn't have to put the pink slip on the envelope. This confused me, but I'm a patient person. I couldn't understand why or how you would know who I was if you didn't stick my name on the provisional ballot. The poll worker next door was visibly frustrated, grabbed the envelope and said, "Well, there's no way that we would know who that is voting, so we're going to go ahead and put that on there." They stuck it on. As I was leaving, I noticed a gentleman getting visibly upset. I overheard him say, "I've been a Democrat for eight years and you are pulling me up as a Republican now. This is absurd." I turned to him. I was frustrated. I turned to him. I said, "Report it." As I went to my car, I was frustrated. It takes a lot for me to get frustrated. I was, I was fuming. I, I made a video. That video now has 130,000 views because I expressed my frustration at the whole event. But I went on. So I went to go phone bank that day. I met a nice lady named Gail. She was 82 years old. She could not stand in line, so I brought her to the polling place on Fillmore and Third to let her vote. I had a friend up front. She got in fine, but she's one of the few. I went to a Presbyterian church to assist voters who were still in line, 500 still in line, as the results were called at 8 o'clock, to give out water and to give out food. This is how much I appreciate this process, and I would be a hypocrite sitting up here today if I didn't say that your vote counts, but mine doesn't. Because my provisional, provisional ballot, we still don't know if it counts. Thank you very much for listening.
Okay, thank you very much, and thanks for sharing your experience, and thanks for helping out that day.
Appreciate it.
I appreciate it very much. Okay, so there's a number of questions asked. I'm going to go ahead and call up Helen or Karen, or if one, if not the other. If you guys, I saw you furiously taking notes. My colleagues were taking notes as I was running the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if we could, one of the things that, that has continually come up is about provisional ballots. And if, if I could have individual who is in charge of dealing with provisional ballots, and he can explain to you the number we saw, the number that were approved, and the number that were not approved, and the reasons for those.
Okay, so if we're going to go into provisional, and that's fine. Is there a specific question, Steve, you want to answer, or just, just a quick report on that?
So, just, just one, and, and on Election Day, I think it was the, I think it was, Jim Barnes brought it up. On Election Day, so, and this may explain the email, too. There was, there were possibly some polling centers that ran out of one particular congressional district ballot, and then perhaps were other congressional district ballots. Democrat, District 7. I go to vote. They don't have District 7. Well, here are used District 9. Was that the case?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gallardo, it is possible that there was, there was not the District 9, but the District 7. But with the e-poll books, we know what district every single voter was in. So as two emergencies that you were talking about, so what have you got planned? One is use, as long as you're using a Democratic ballot, so they get to cast their vote. The second is that the touchscreen is alive and well in every single precinct. It has unlimited ballots, and those were the two.
But, but Karen, going back to this CD, it's going to tell me how many, how many in District 7 voted for Bernie Sanders? How many voted for Hillary Clinton? Those totals may not be accurate if you had voters using, in District 7, using District 9 ballots.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gallardo, at the polling place, this was a combine of all, altogether, and I think you, you do have the information that you need to determine, did a person vote and what district are they, are they registered in?
But, Mr. Chairman, Karen, I guess my question is more the accuracy of the canvas. Instead, I mean, it's, it's not if they voted or not, but did they receive the correct ballot?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gallardo, I do not believe we, I do not believe we ran out of ballots at any one particular polling place, but had any of the people at the polling place been concerned, they could have voted on the touchscreen. We did have a number of people vote on the touchscreen in different places, usually because they're, they're disabled.
Okay. Go ahead. Do you still want to do a quick presentation on provisionals?
If I could have Ray Balenswell just run through the number that we had and the disposition in the various categories.
Thank you, Ray. Thanks for being here today.
Mr. Chair, members of the board. Again, Ray Balenswell, Assistant Director, Maricopa County Elections. I know the questions that come up with regards to provisionals, so we have just finished, as Helen and Karen mentioned yesterday. We, the total, and the numbers already have been provided. We did have the 46, the 4,631 that were considered ballots counted, which made up various groups. And then we had the 20,008 that were invalidated. And of that, again, the numbers already provided, 18,322 were not eligible to vote in this election. That makeup is those individuals which were using the term independent, which is theoretically not a recognized party, but to identify anybody that's not affiliated with the parties that were voting. So there could be some libertarians in there that were not eligible, but that would be the total number, 18,322. In that, within that, there's also makeups of individuals that were not registered, meaning they came to the polls, there is nothing on the file for them. And before I go forward with all of these numbers, know that every single one of these provisionals, not only were they first checked, they were second checked, and to some extent, third. So there's not one decision made on these particular ballots, provisional, that was not at random or ever 100% were looked at by a staff member, down to a second check manager, down to a third check, on the, specifically on the not-eligibles. Because we know that was a question with regards to how many individuals were systematically changed independent and this kind of misnomer, but again, those all were reviewed. So again, not registered, 1,162. Incomplete information on the provisional, we had 115. That is a makeup of the individual just signed the form. Now, that could be contrary to, either the board didn't inform them, but again, there was 115 that were incomplete. We couldn't make out that form to identify.
And then, to, to that point, Mr. Chairman, Ray, the 115, what, I guess, what, what constitutes an incomplete form besides, besides not having a signature? What else? What is a must on a, on a provisional ballot that needs to be provided or to be accepted? And what, what is it that, I mean, what was actually missing that said, "Nope"?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Gallardo, the actually, even, we've even gone away from the signature being a requirement, and by that I mean, because to get that form, we actually have a digital signature that you've captured. There used to be in the old days, two years ago, if I may, before technology, that we use, utilize. So the only things that are required are a name, identifiable name, and an address that we can tie back to that's a ballot address. I will say the majority of these, in all honesty, are either the name was not identifiable, the handwriting on there, but I would say 90%, having touched most of the manager's screen, were individuals who wrote Peel Box 3, saying, "I reside at." You cannot reside at a Peel Box. You are identifying yourself as a registered voter, and you're saying, "We can't find John Smith at Peel Box 32." There is no John Smith at Peel Box 32. But even with that, you're attesting that you reside at this in Maricopa County, so we couldn't identify the voter or associate them back to.
And, and Mr. Chairman, Ray, is that, I'm sorry, is that statutory in terms of the requirements, or is that internal election procedures rules? Or, I guess, who makes those guidelines that you, you got to be able to read the signature, or you, you have to put your physical address? Is that statutory?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gallardo, it actually is statutory, but not in that specifics, meaning we're not saying you have to read the signature. What it is, it has to be the, in statute, and also in the Secretary of Procedures Manual, which is, has force and effect of law. They identify anything that's statute is ambiguous, meaning it has to be identifiable to a given individual or voter. That's the statute in its layman's term. Then the Secretary of State's Procedures Manual will identify, meaning what does that mean? Well, if you have a John Smith, can you effectively say that's one of the 1,000 that we have on file and associate that ballot to that particular voter?
But, Mr. Chairman, Ray, so just so I understand, the 115, if they were, if we were able to, or the office was able to read the name and identify the address, they, they would have been counted, correct?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Gallardo, that is absolute. If we could identify that voter and identify them as the, and using the, and I apologize to the John Smiths out there, but if they were John Smith and we could identify by the date of birth, there's also a date of birth. That's why even when Director Osborne asked for individuals wanting to list that, we have hundreds of seniors, juniors, I myself being a junior. So if we could identify that date of birth, find that John Smith, and we absolutely made that effort to identify and associate that.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Still going?
Just the further numbers, if you need and must. Some of those are just, like I said, the 18,322, specific to that was, again, that is a makeup of individuals that are not eligible. We have early ballots that were sent and counted, which you already mentioned, 168. And again, the makeup of the good, if you want to know that, I have that as well. I'm assuming those are, were not in question, so those were made good. But I will identify that the majority of them, 2,628 of the valid ones, were new residents, which is a standard which we have. Individuals are not aware that they have not updated in the, for a year plus, and so their, the majority of those are new resident and/or something with regards to their address that we had to correct.
Okay.
And, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, Ray, talk to me about Service Arizona.
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Gallardo, Service Arizona, yes, about it, your questions would be.
It's been the, the topic of discussion. Where they are, and, and maybe this is a question that has to be directed at the state as well. For those voters that showed up at the polls, were PND, had a voter ID card, said, "I'm a, I'm a lifelong Democrat," they were given a provisional ballot, correct? Or no?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Gallardo, an individual who showed up with a ID card that said that they are Democrat, but our system did not, were indeed given a provisional ballot because although they may have a voter ID card, as old as it is, and I inferred and made a comment earlier to, to my driver's license say I weigh 180, but it doesn't necessarily hold true any longer. It's 189. But anyways, the, but, but all truth be known that, yes, you could have a card, but it does, it could be, as everyone knows, we've, we've done mass mailings of cards, so we, they would have it there, not in the system as a Democrat, would have been correct.
So if they're PND, they're claiming with or without a card, they're claiming they're a lifelong Democrat or Republican, they were given a provisional ballot. Would anyone be turned away for not having a card, or everyone will be given a provisional ballot?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gallardo, actual federal law requires the right to vote a provisional ballot, and every voter was identified that they are eligible to vote provisional and would have been given a provisional. Outside of the ID at the poll requirement, which you still have to prove some side of conditional provisional is another factor, which if you didn't have ID, but at all, but yes, everybody would have been issued a ballot.
And, Mr. Chairman, Ray, how, how does that handle? How, how are those handled? If, if Service Arizona, if it's true what media is reporting and what was stated at the public hearing, that voters had their party affiliation changed through Service Arizona without the authority of the voters, and they go to the polls and they vote, how is that corrected? Or how, how are those ballots handled? And how many were there?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Gallardo, I can tell you that the 18,322 is the total number of individuals that we show registered within the system as something other than Rep-Dem. But further into our research, we've done, and we identified approximately 5,500 that were Service Arizona. Actually, let me back up. There were about 15,000 that were Service Arizona-related. In our query, however, they, the majority of them were removed from, they were still reviewed to see their registration forms, but they didn't have a modification to a party caused by Service Arizona. So, in other words, we were, we specifically narrowed down to approximately 4,500 individuals, which is not, it was just going to our third check, which I mentioned, which we normally would not do, but we did narrow down of these 18, there were 4,500 that were Service Arizona-related. And by, and when I say Service Arizona, I shouldn't, I'm just using your term. It's actually MVD office, because there are two methodologies. Service Arizona is online. When a voter goes online to the service, www servicedarizona.com, you, so you walk through a wizard that you can register to vote. That site does not allow you to leave a blank. It mandates before you can move forward, you select Dem, Rep, Lib, Green, or None. Individuals that selected None is, they have absolutely, and we can identify those forms, have absolutely done that at some point in their registration. Those individuals that were identified, it's done on the internet, Service Arizona, are actually those that we say those are what the individual voter had requested.
Supervisor Chukri.
Mr. Chairman, to that point, Ray, I, I think that's a unique observation, because part of what today's meeting is about is plotting a course forward as to make sure how we prevent this from happening yet again in subsequent elections, future elections here. And there is clearly some disconnect here with, and we'll phrase it as Service Arizona, the Service Arizona model, because I had constituents reach out to me that simply wanted to update their address, wanted to go and make sure that their registration was who they, who they were as a party, and regardless of what they put in, it still somehow defaulted to independent or, or another party designation that they were not. So as part of us going forward, I think as we're taking notes, we're building a case on how we don't let this happen again. This MVD portion, Service Arizona portion, is an absolute must that we must look at correcting, because I do think well-qualified people who know and are proficient in how they can update their address, and, and still yet, they did not receive a ballot, still yet, they were with the wrong party designation, so.
And, and Mr. Chairman, Ray, how many of those were, were counted? How, how many provisional ballots that, maybe counted or not counted, that had a party change? I guess it's a question.
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Will Cox.
Supervisor Will Cox?
Oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Gallardo.
I mean, it pilled here.
You have been here a long time.
It was that spot that was previously occupied. I apologize for that. Supervisor Gallardo, the, the total of, after upon all that third review narrowing it down to 4,000 individual voters in that 18,322 that had a form that could have been done by a customer service representative, that could have been missed keyed, if that may be the case, we had a total of 46.
46?
46 voters that we considered them office errors, meaning upon review, and I will tell you now that 26 of those were because we could not retrieve an application done in 2007. So they went into an MVD office 2007, and to some extent, the, either they or the MVD agent marked None for them, and we received that. And this is, again, almost nine years ago, and they have been voting as an independent, for lack of better words, for those nine years. Those 26 were identified as, and we kind of tie those to the runner, we went ahead and honored them as them indicating they were cast as a Democrat. The other ones were identified that there was a error in, and again, out of the 1.9 or up to 2 million forms, we had identified close to 20 of them that should have been, when the form was received, keyed to a Dem and a Rep. And so those, those 20 out of, is where we're at.
Okay. Look, Karen.
I, I think it, we need to point out that we're working with the Department of Transportation, Mr. Chairman. We are working with the Department of Transportation and the Secretary of State's office to make sure that we have everything in the easiest possible interaction with the Department of Transportation. But we have worked with them through the weekend, and we appreciate their cooperation.
Thank you. Looking at the, Steve, looking at the clock. I, I mean it.
One last question, one last question, because it's, considering the number of independents we have, which is a third of the voter file, is it possible that some of those voters may have had their party affiliation changed from Republican to Democrat to PND, and may have been on Pebble, that should have received an early ballot, but didn't because of the change? They should have received some type of notification, like the sample ballot. Is it possible, and we're talking around 700, 700,000 people, for voters, is it possible that some of them out there, because of Service Arizona, or MVD, however we want to call it, could have been disenfranchised because of Service Arizona and never got their early ballot, because they are on Pebble, or never got a notification on where to go to vote?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gallardo, see, I got that right. A couple of things. Number one, we only found 20 out of the million nine that were, that were in error. Number two, I want to point out that the provisional ballot is the safeguard. The provisional ballot has always been the safeguard. If you walk in, there's a sign on the wall that says you have a right to vote. So if we, no matter what has happened, we give you a ballot. And then that's why the, the polling place burns, the whatever. We've always had a backup plan. The machine doesn't work. All these things that can happen, you're not correctly on the file. You don't believe that you're correctly on the file. That's why we take them in and we went over and over and over. There, anything is possible, but I tell you, 20 out of that, that many were darn few in my book.
And, and Mr. Chairman, Karen, I think my concern is those that were never notified. It isn't that they, not the ones that went to the polls, it's the ones that didn't go to the polls because they were not notified. You know, all of us in the room, probably, we follow elections, we vote every time, it's right there with our, you know, with family and church. I mean, we, we vote. But there's so many voters out there that don't know, and I think the possibility, and that's why I really want to dive into Service Arizona later on in the future, as we move on, because is there the possibility of voters that are in the other category, because according to statute, they're not going to be given their Pebble, even though they are signed up for Pebble, and they're never going to be notified, this is where you go to vote?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gallardo, in the world of, of infinite possibilities, there is always a possibility that anything can happen. But I'm telling you, we have a call center that took 11,000 calls per day. Am I registered? You can go on, for those folks that were concerned, they can go on the website and find out. They can go on Secretary of State's office and find out. But those 11,000 folks that called every day, and we could have not done this without two people, two groups. One was the poll workers, thank you to them, and the second was that call center. They hung in there with us, time after time after time, and we were able to, to check that. But in the world of what ifs?
Thank you. Okay. Ray?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Gallardo, and if I may, to reiterate Karen's offer to have, I don't know why I'm welcoming that, because I'm the one that has to research those, but we definitely, I, I would tell you from a personal note, if you're hearing personal stories, that I had over 150-plus voters standing behind me and my desk, checking because they were lifelong Democrats or lifelong Republicans, to be frank. And we stood there with, and we looked at their history, and when I showed them the form that was handwritten by them, and they marked that box None, the first thing was, I didn't realize that's what that meant. Now, I'm not saying that that's true and holds true, but it is the case that we're more than willing to research those. That's what we want to do. We're trying to prove the positive, not something that's negative. So give us those names, individuals that friends of, third cousins of my brother, I don't, can't look up, but I can absolutely with that name prove the positive, and we're willing to do the work to make that so.
Okay, so thank you, thank you, Ray, for being with us today and giving us your perspective and your answers. Now, there was a couple of questions from the audience that you guys were writing questions furiously down. Can you, can you answer some of those? I, I was trying to run the meeting, so I didn't get a chance to write them, but.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Kleiman, I believe, is at first, and he said, "If we had saved this money in 20, in 2014, I mean, 20, 2012, that we could have held, held on to that." These bills, as has been since the start, when you have a bill for whatever it is, truck rental, gas, polling place workers, whatever, we are reimbursed totally just that much. This is not a money that we can put away for, for rainy days. So that is, it's each election by itself and done on fiscal year. So we were not able to, to keep any extra money. I was trying to find some that I might be able to, to answer, other than the, the touchscreen. Oh, one of the, Patricia, I believe, Jason, was talking about the polling places in November 7th. There will be 724 places, polling locations, in the primary and in the general. We are not changing from that. That was the DOJ-approved level, and we are sticking with those 724.
Karen, you just brought up a question for Supervisor Chukri.
Okay.
Karen, what about May, though? What, what, are, are we still reassessing that for the May election? How many polling places we'll have?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chukri, we're going for double. We're trying everything we can do to get double the polling places for the May election, if we can possibly recall in places, but have to be, have to be large. But remember, in May, Mr. Chukri, there will be no issue with the independents, because everybody can vote. There will be, there will be an excess of a million 300,000 ballots that will be sent out. And I would remind you that on Friday, we mailed the military and overseas for May, but we're going for double. We are, we are trying, we, we have met with Supervisor Gallardo and Senator Quesada. We met with some of the, the other groups that have said, "Let me, let us help you." And we are trying, that's what they're back in the office doing right now, calling these places, and we're trying to get to double.
Okay. Thank you.
That's, that's a great question, because I think all five of us were about to ask that question. So thank you for that. Was there any, did you guys write any other questions of, I'm noticeably missing, I just asked Andy if there was one? I think there were more, I think there were more statements, love, than questions, but...
Mr. Chairman, there was one other, and could we have, have the, the polling longer? We have 27 days ahead of time that you can come into any of the three offices that Mrs. Purcell has, our office here, our office down at Third and Lincoln, our office in the East Valley. 27 days is open. That's when we mail the early ballots as well, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify, the comments that are being made are not statements. These are legitimate problems that have been identified by even elections officials and others that have been engaged in this for a long time. These are issues that have been introduced at the legislature, they're not just statements, they are legitimate problems. And I think Tuesday's election was a perfect storm. It's a collaboration of 60 polling places and a slew of issues that have never been addressed. I think the Advocacy Network put it best in a news conference where they said the blame is to go around, and it starts with the state, the governor's office, the legislature, all the way down. So they're not just statements, they're legitimate problems.
So Steve, on that point, I appreciate it. As you guys know, I talk in a farmer lexicon, I'm not a polished politician like somebody sitting to my left, way my left. So, any, I'd like to start with my colleagues, you guys are still here to answer some questions, further questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Andy.
I would, and this probably goes way, way back, and I think I might have heard the answer. Thank you. When did we begin, or when did the presidential preference election come about? Was that '92? Is that what?
The legislation was in 1992, yes.
And how did, even from my own just memory, which seems to be failing me, how did we, how did we pick our candidate before then? As parties, was that similar to the caucus systems that everyone else, so many others are doing around the country?
Mr. Chairman Supervisor Knastick, similar to what some of the other people are doing in caucuses around the country, we are kind of involved, part of that right now. For the Republican Party, they asked us to do their legislative district elections, where they elect people to go to their state convention, which we held April 30th. We will also conduct that election, and that's where they choose their national delegates. As we now see in our, in the legislation, the party, each one of the individual parties must support on at least the first ballot, the person who wins the state. So that has already been determined here in Arizona. That used to be, okay, the delegates to the legislative districts, they all supported certain candidates, and then they went to the state convention and they supported certain candidates, and they got to be national delegates and supporting certain candidates. So it's, the process really is still being done. We started doing elections last Saturday, we did one on Saturday, we did three on Monday, four on Tuesday. I don't think we're doing any tonight, but we have them for the rest of it. So we'll do the majority of the legislative districts within Maricopa County, and that's the, kind of the old form, but still in their bylaws that they must conduct also.
Okay, and what was the, I guess the issue of the day in 1992 that resulted in coming up with this, what some describe as a beauty pageant? You know, these preference elections that in many cases, I think disenfranchise voters because their candidate's already long gone by the time, you know, the vote day comes.
Mr. Chairman Supervisor Knastick, I think the rationale was that, one of the things that they wanted more attention drawn to the state of Arizona, not only from, well, basically from the presidential candidates, that they would come here and talk to the people because there would be something going on in the way of a presidential preference. And I think if you look historically back, there has only been a couple of times that the person who won the primary, the presidential preference election here in Arizona, was still a candidate by the time we got to the national convention.
Okay. Any further questions, Andy? I can roll back if you're distilling that one.
Well, I would like to, and I've been out of town for a few days, spotty news coverage down in Mexico, but the, there's been discussion, I understand, from, sounds like the governor and others calling for future preference elections to include independents in those party ballots, is that?
That was the, excuse me, Mr. Chairman Supervisor Knastick, that was what I heard came out from the governor's office, yes.
Well, and it doesn't, to me, that seems to, this might not be the discussion for the day, but then, what's the point of having a party at all if it's, if it's an open to anybody that wants to cast a ballot in your party? Maybe the conversation with the legislature should be, let's roll it back, let the parties pay for their own processes and conduct their own elections and take all this confusion and expense off the table.
Mr. Chairman Supervisor Knastick, I guess that's one of the things that the legislature and everybody else is going to look at, and there's talk on both sides of how to do that.
So you guys mull the answer over as that one came up. I was thinking, I picked up some scurrying over here on my right side. Supervisor Barney?
Well, I've been furiously or feverishly, as you said, taking notes, trying to stay on top of this, there's a lot of, a lot of content, a lot of dialogue, much like drinking from a fire hose, but what I believe is that we've got a lot of facts, and then we've also got a lot of feelings, which are real, and perception is often reality, at least to me. And so I think going forward, which is our real goal here, we've got to try to separate between the fact and the fiction, and figure out what we can do so this doesn't happen again. And frankly, I would, I think that probably universally, our public speakers today were Democrats, some that I know, and I would compliment them for their respect and their decorum and their perspectives. I think they brought good views and things that we, that we need to take into play. And we will, and we've got to do it now, because we've got an election on May 17th. And frankly, I believe that my Republican friend Helen Purcell and my Democrat friend Karen Osborne are the best positioned people in the county to do that. And so I know there's those that disagree, and we can agree to disagree, and I appreciate, no, and I appreciate the, I know there's something in the air that's causing people to cough, and that's okay. We, you know, that's the beauty of this process. I respect your passion and your decorum in trying to help all of us protect our democratic privilege. So I'm grateful, I really am. This has been a very engaging process. The thing that I would clarify is that, and Supervisor Gallardo said this definitively at the legislature on Wednesday, we've heard it time and time again, we heard it from Mr. Barton, this isn't about money, this wasn't about money, this is not about the financial conditions. This was based on decisions, based on experts, if you will, if I could be so bold, that took data from previous elections. And here's the facts, we're all entitled to our own opinions, but not our own definition of the facts, if they're, if they're true. And you could say this is great for Denny's Gee Whiz book and mark it up as that, but here they are. We, if you look at this canvas that we're going to either approve or disapprove today, and I'm in support of approving it for the record, and I'll make a motion if the chair decides to ask for one at some point in this meeting, 73% of the voters fall under the early ballot category, and 27% didn't, of those that are registered that were eligible for this election. Okay, that's empirical, that's a fact. Interestingly, of those voters that showed up, 60% of those that exercised their democratic privilege were early ballot voters, and 26% showed up at the polls. Now, that's in line with historical numbers. That's, again, based on, we can go back further than 2008, but that's 2008, 2012. The other thing that's interesting for the Gee Whiz books that we all have out, this decision was based on a historical trend, starting in 2008, 59% were early ballots, in 2012, 80% were early ballots. I'm talking about preference elections, because that's a unique anomaly in Arizona, and that's what we're here to talk about today. 86% for 2016. Now, that's the actual percentage of vote that was rendered by a qualified electorate exercising their democratic privilege. And so I think that the conditions that led to the fiasco, as it's been called, the mistake as it's been accepted, we fell down as a county last week. We did. And you can call us stupid, you can call us ignorant, you can tell us how dumb we look, but you can't call us dishonest, because it was based on empirical data that led to legitimate and fair assumptions that guided us to accept a voter platform that anticipated 1,381 voters per location. That's empirical. Now, you can, we can talk about all the externalities, provisionals, independents, the weather, whatever we want to talk about, that led to the fiasco, but the goal to me, and I think I would hearken back to Ms. Jason, I would hearken back to Ms. Pastross, the goal, we can spend all day and all night talking about why and how we fell down, but unless we allow that to telegraph and translate into how we're not going to fall down again on May 17th, and how we're not going to fall down in August and November, then we're wasting our time. So all I would say, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Helen and Karen, the public who are here supporting this great democratic privilege, I feel like we're well positioned to pivot as we must and fix the problems that existed that caused a dire circumstance that cannot and should not ever exist again in Maricopa County. So nobody's hiding behind the legislature, they gave us a bad hand, they dealt us a bad hand. We're going to deal with it, we're going to fix it. So for me, I, you know, Supervisor Knastick talks about who should vote, who shouldn't in a preference election, we won't talk about this again for four years, or maybe eight, I don't know, but that's a legislative decision, that's not this legislative body. If the governor wants to work with the chambers at the Capitol to adjust that, that's great. I think I would support that. I don't believe that we ought to have the taxpayers fund a vote or a ballot initiative that precludes a population of voters, and right now, that's what happens under the current statutory construct with the presidential preference election, a unique anomalistic circumstance here in Arizona. So going forward, we've got a lot of work to do long before we get to the next preference election. We've got to make sure that we pull up our bootstraps and that we don't fall down again on 17th. We've heard great feedback from you, we all watched the legislative hearing on Monday, Supervisor Gallardo was there, and you have my commitment, and I share this with each of my colleagues here, we're going to go to work and make sure that we work with our elected recorder and the elections director to make sure that it doesn't happen again. That sounds like a verbose, long political speech, but I think it represents exactly where I've tried to find myself over a week of a lot of feedback, input, conversations, emails, phone calls, dialogues, a few courier pigeons that delivered ranting messages, it's all good. We need to shift and be better, and we will. And so, Mr. Chairman, when you're ready, I'm prepared to make a motion that we exercise the business of the people and accept this canvas, and that we move forward and make sure that under no circumstances that we get caught in a circumstance that would have us allow what happened last week to happen again. And I'm confident in our team that we can do that if we let them get to work.
Thank you, Dennis.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to heed your warning and not clap. Thank you, Denny.
Thank you for that, Andy.
Appreciate it. As always Supervisor Barney, brings great clarity to very emotional and sometimes very difficult to understand issues. So thank you, Denny, and if that was a motion, I would second the motion or be prepared when it's time.
So we have a motion in a second to item, agenda item number one. Steve looked like he wanted to say something, so Steve?
I always have something to say.
Well, you said a lot today.
You mean Steve from the legislature and the elections department?
That's right.
Our best lobbyists at the Capitol.
Our best and brightest, go ahead.
You know, while I vowed, when I was there, I was telling Helen, I was at the legislature, I vowed never to go back at the legislature, and here I was, back at the legislature, but that's okay. Mr. Chairman, my fellow board members, I think Danny Barney, Supervisor Barney put it best, and, you know, March 22nd definitely was a terrible day for Maricopa County, particularly for the voters that showed up to exercise the most fundamental right, the right to vote. I was out there at many of the polling places, I went out there to see the lines, and started, it was around 10 o'clock in the morning when I started getting phone calls, and I darted out to many of the polling places. Then I was out there till late, probably 10:30 at night, when I saw our own county manager standing in line to exercise his right. And it was probably the most hurtful feeling to be able, I mean, if I come across passionate and talkative on this issue because this is so important to me, I believe everyone has the most fundamental right to be able to exercise it and to see the long lines, and really feel helpless at that time. You know, when you're out there on Seventh Avenue in Glendale and see, you know, 500 people in line, CNN, the national media's already calling the results, and there wasn't really much we can do. But the fact is that you look at what happened Tuesday, it was definitely the perfect storm. I think the 60-place polling place, that was the, that was the hot fudge and the whipped cream and cherry on top, but I'm sorry, the state legislature has made the ice cream, and they need to take the blame as well. I think, like I said, the Advocacy Network put it best when the blame can go all the way from the governor's office all the way down to the county. But nonetheless, there's a lot of folks that can be pointed at, but at the end of the day, how do we move forward? How do we move forward to make sure this doesn't happen again? How do we identify those issues that need to be addressed by the legislature? And I think that's where I'm looking to go. I want to make sure this never happens again. But at the same time, we have an election in front of us that we have an obligation to decide if we're going to accept this canvas or not. There are too many unanswered questions, I believe, in terms of, do we have accurate numbers on the congressional side? Were ballots being used to help voters that were not in that congressional district? That's a big unanswered question to me. Provisional ballots, I think, still need to be looked at, I know there's some questions that were brought up in public comment, but I believe that before we move forward in canvassing this election, because the canvass is the end of the election, it's topping it off, before we do that, I think there's some dialogue that still needs to be talked about and some areas we need to look. The scope of the breakdown was sweeping, and the issues were serious, and I think there's a lot of unanswered questions that remain. I cannot in good conscience certify the results to be true and accurate, and as a result, I must be voting now.
Okay, well, we're not to the, we're not to the vote yet, but that's, that's, that's good, thank you for that. Mr. Chukri.
Mr. Chairman, I want to reflect too, just on the last week's activities, we, I think my comments last week was that the Maricopa County brand failed last week, which it certainly did, but what we saw is something different in politics, and that is, many of us campaigned on transparency, these very meetings are now recorded and you can access them back, but what you saw in Ms. Purcell, in Ms. Osborne, was not a pointing of the finger, you didn't see them say it's so-and-so's fault, she accepted the blame. And we talk about decorum, and I thank the folks that are here today that spoke publicly, because you did issue, you did embrace decorum in your time here today, but no one more so has exhibited decorum than Ms. Purcell the past week under some pretty stressful circumstances. And every time, there's a time in all of our lives that we've fallen down, to quote Mr. Barney, and Maricopa County did last week. But that being said, as the saying goes, we're all in the soup here. It wasn't just Maricopa County, it was, there were a lot of other extenuating circumstances that if we really want to get to the root of the matter going forward, needs to be looked at. And I think that Mr. Barton, Ms. Pope, Mr. Higgins, just to name a few that were here today, touched on some of those things. So if I might, I would suggest to the media, I would suggest to those folks that are angry, that you have every right to be angry, but we also have a job to do to restore your faith in the process. But we also have a job to do to restore your faith in the process, and we will do that. We will restore your faith in the process. So, how do we do that? We do that by looking forward. We do that by, I want to know why, why did Mr. Higgins, on the e-poll system that I think we spent $5 million on some time ago, why did his name keep coming up, his party affiliation keep coming up wrong? Why did some of these other things happen? And let's just make sure that we tighten that up and find out as to how those mistakes occurred, and make sure that they don't repeat themselves going forward. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I thank you for this hearing, for this meeting. I thank Ms. Purcell and Ms. Osborne for being here, for standing against the music the past week and not shrugingly saying it was someone else's fault. I think we all share the blame, this body included, but we also share the responsibility going forward, that we ask these questions and that we make sure that this is not repeated come May, come August, and come November of this year. Thank you.
Okay. Well, what I, just, thank you, guys. I think I gave everybody a chance to say something, and I just wanted to showcase this board and what we do right. There's plenty of governments to do things wrong, and I will reflect back on the legislative hearing, if that's the way they do business, do business, and pummeling people and not letting to get to respond, and not letting them get to the ability to show their report, I think that's wrong, and they need to shoulder a little bit of that blame. Number two, I want to thank you guys for coming here and being here today. Some of you are not familiar with the process, but for you to come here today, spend time with us, give us your statements, opinions, judgments, whatever you would like to call it. Again, I am working on my lexicon here as a farmer, but the realness about this situation is, and I think I hear loud and clear from the board, that we voted unanimously for 60 poll sites using our best judgment. I don't make an apology for that. We're not making an apology for that. We did the best we could, listening to our people, do their jobs correctly. I do not apologize, I personally do not apologize, for a line at a polling place. We work so hard to engage the public, to come out and do what they should do constitutionally, to vote for the candidates of their choice, because people have lost their lives for that. What I will absolutely apologize for is the length and the duration of those lines. We had very much to do with that. We had 60 polling places. That was not the right pick. We are working on it, though. You can see how we make political sausage up here, and it's not, this is just a segment in front of the public on how we do things. We identify a problem, we listen to people, and we fix the problem. That's why I think all of us took this job and ran for these jobs. At the time when we ran for elections or the appointments, we felt the county had problems, and we thought we could use our experience to fix those problems. And I think that's what you, I think that's what you're seeing up here. We are going to use our best experience to fix the problem, and going forward, and make sure that Maricopa County has, is that shining star and that best brand of government. And if that means coming out here and having a long meeting and apologizing to our public, we're here to do that. So, I thank you all for being here. I was wondering, maybe quite possibly, if we have the ability to make the motion again so we know what we're voting on? If you could restate your motion, Mr. Barney?
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to ARS 16-642 through 16-645, I would move that we accept the official returns as presented today by our Elections Department, recognizing there's been a lot of comment and input that will help us as we go forward, that we accept the official canvas as presented.
Thank you, Denny. I hear the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would second that motion, and just for the record, I think I heard, I believe I heard answers, sufficient answers to every question that was posed by Supervisor Gallardo regarding any reason to be paused here that, or to not vote today, I think has been answered. So, I don't have any hesitation in doing this, and when the time's right, I'll vote.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
No.
Four ayes, one nay, motion passes. Thank you all very much for being here. That concludes the business. And a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to second, or adjourn?
Welcome to the Fox 10 News Now stream. You just watched the Board of Supervisors discuss some of the...